For the selectmen meeting to order. All three selectmen are present, town administrator is present. Leo Martell is video recording for the benefit of the public. And Landon Akerstine will upload those on YouTube and on our website. Let's go over old business first, gentlemen.
I'll make the motion to approve the seven PM regular minutes of December ninth, two thousand twenty-one as written.
Seconded. Motion made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Lynn, did you give me the meeting notes?
Yep, they're in the agenda one.
Oh, okay.
On the next.
I'm in the agenda one.
No. Yep, should be there.
You did say there were going to be a lot of work. Here they are. There you go. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the eight forty-nine PM non-public minutes of December ninth, two thousand twenty-one as written.
Okay, Michael's second boss. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm gonna open up to a quick public comment. Do you have anything? Anybody have a public comment for meetings start? Go ahead, Don.
There's a new date for vaccination clinic on March fifth. The Saturday night, or Saturday, nine to two. And it'll be at the school, in the library, in the common areas.
Great. I will say that the last one was a great success. What was the total amount of people?
Yep, we had a hundred and seventy vaccinated.
Hundred and seventy. I was a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-one, so.
Yeah.
But I want to thank you for setting that up, and also thank all your volunteers for the selectmen. That was a nicely run.
They made it happen.
Yeah, they did. It was nice to see, and I know that everybody went there, gave high regards to getting it out back. And by the looks of it on TV, we need another one. Looks like we need another one.
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna get a library update and budget discussion with Mary Giradmore, trustees. Okay, Mary, you wanna?
With me today is Martha Wilson, who's our chair.
Okay, hi Martha.
Hi, how are you?
And Karen Lassard, who acts as our curator.
All right, sounds good.
So our budget is pretty level funded.
Well, I was laughing because was this written by a legal expert?
No.
Because I'm looking at the fine print.
Um, it's, 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 as you can see, two thousand twenty-one is on the, on the left side compared to two thousand twenty-two. As you can see there, we haven't. We're not asking for much of anything.
Very small increases.
Yeah, our health benefits went down this year. We have a few little bumps in subscription costs. Our downloadable content went up, obviously. Our contract with our computer tech guy went up a little bit. Like a hundred dollars, so we're pretty much the same, as you can see there.
And we included a three percent for the town employees. Did you guys get your increase in there as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, and on the, on the very bottom right, there's, the, last year our lapse funds were one thousand seventy-one. We just put in a sort of a guess about a thousand dollars this year that would, that are lapsed. But we're, we'll have that final number once the year closes.
Yeah, we have, we have one payroll round today, and then another one in two weeks. So we'll know more. I mean, this is just a rough number for you tonight, so. We'll, I'll have a number, a lapse fund.
Can I just speak on that? So what? So they understand, and my office understands, this, your number may be amended slightly.
Slightly.
Okay, and we'll have a good number when it comes time for public hearing, and then we can put it in the system.
Yes. We'll know right after diversity year, really, when the smoke clears. Yes, and then this other little handout that I made you.
I gotta say, I love that front picture cover.
I know, isn't it nice?
You see that picture?
I didn't see it.
We have no, we have no picture like that of the statue with the building in the background.
Yep.
We do have photogenic.
You see it much?
Our building is very photogenic.
It's quite a, quite a picture there. I think, uh, that's another picture that's worthy of a town report cover.
Oh.
We'll be talking about that later tonight.
I still think it would look good with a face mask on.
I think he's had one on there before.
Yes, I've seen one.
Yeah, I've seen one, not in a while. It might be time, huh? And we had a very good year, you know, we're re- redefining ourselves. We've been able to go through these, and be flexible through these times. Our summer reading programs were all outside with good attendance. The value of that outdoor space is, it's functioned as a classroom. We're very grateful for that space. Currently, um, well, we're going back inside, our programs are turning virtual now. I do want to point out that, um, I don't know if you are aware, we received one ARPA grant for thirteen hundred twenty-one dollars in June of two thousand twenty-one. This was made possible, possible by the Institute of Museum and Library Services and the New Hampshire State Library. We purchased a portable outdoor sign for the school street sign. And playaway launch pads which are not, do not connect to the internet. They're tablets that support children's education and development needs, and they're very, very, very cool. There is a second ARPA grant on the table. It'll come in two thousand twenty-two, if it comes. It'll be on the table, actually, this week, on the twenty-second, in front of governor and council. And that grant was for, very competitive, started at ten thousand dollars. My proposal was for thirteen thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty-five dollars to purchase some shelving on wheels that we can roll around, recreate our small footprint. And, you know, open up our floor space by probably fifty percent.
And we'll also adjust our budget if we are recipients of this grant. We'll bump our revenues up, but we're also gonna bump up the expenditures to cover the cost of those shelves.
Okay.
It is a reimbursement. It's, it, we're going to need to pay for it. Pay for the shelves first, and then get reimbursed from the state. So keep your fingers crossed.
When will you hear about the grant?
Twenty-second.
Probably the twenty-third.
That soon. Okay, so you'll have that information again for the final?
Yep.
Budget.
And Mary worked tirelessly to put together those two grant proposals, so, and I think that, you know, especially the, the rolling shelves, it would mean that we would take out a couple of the shelves that sort of, the ones that you would, you see, right, when you, when you come in, you take, take a couple of those rows of shelves out and put these rolling shelves in, so then they can be pushed back or moved to the side, which will open up that room for more space. You know, obviously, we're, we're crossing our fingers that the upstairs is also successful. But this'll give us an additional option for flexibility with, with spacing.
Everyday needs, our everyday needs, really, so.
A couple of things to go over with you guys, since we have some of the trustees here. Uh, we did sign a contract for the sprinkler system for the entire building. It's all gonna be a dry system, including the basement and the attic.
Yep.
And, um, they're gonna be starting work on there. They're gonna be ordering some of the stuff there. They might come in and measure some more down in the basement.
I've seen, I've seen them, and some pipes went in this morning or yesterday.
Yeah, we hear about three times a week.
Yes, yeah.
So they're gonna, um, they're gonna start that installation progress from now till, till, um, March. So that, that'll be being done in there. And we'll, I'll let Lynn make them aware of your hours, so they can try to avoid the, uh, the days you have heavy usage of people in there and whatnot, and work on your off days.
Okay, all right.
So let us know if you have any issues with them. They seem to be a real good company. Uh, same thing, the front steps, we also ended up doing a contract to replace those front steps. Demolish them and replace them, and they're actually starting earlier than I thought. I thought they were gonna wait till spring, but they're gonna actually start that work later this winter.
Mid-June.
Mid-June.
Yeah, but they're, they're supposed to let us know two weeks in advance, so I will be up to date.
So those will all be back up to snuff and.
What do you think, um, what did you say the, um, for the fire suppression? Who do you estimate for?
Finish time?
Yeah.
March.
But I mean, it, it felt like a two week. Is it gonna be a long drawn-out construction project?
Oh, no, it'll be quite a lo-, quite a lot longer than that, yeah. It'll probably be a week or two per floor, I would think.
Oh, okay.
Of installing the piping and getting it all bracketed up and whatnot.
Okay, that's good.
And then, and then after the piping is done, the majority of their work will be down in the basement, which shouldn't affect you much really.
No. Okay.
All right, uh, one other thing we had talked about is the storage is gonna get even less limited in that building, because we're gonna use up a bunch of the room for tanks in there, so. Uh, we had talked about using some money that we had in the town to, uh, get one more of the pods. I haven't talked with Jeff yet. Maybe putting a storage pond down there at the highway department, so that we'll have some other storage, because if something does go on with the second floor of that building, as you know, there's very little storage for you guys, so.
Right, right.
You know, I'm not talking about books, I'm talking about things, um, spare shelvings, that type of stuff, that we have no place to put now.
I've got one pole on the storage container.
Oh, we do, great. Okay. So if that comes through, we'll let you know. And I know Don has some stuff up there he'd like to store in there as well, so. We'll let you know as that comes together. Um, you guys did hear Mike, uh, our other meeting apologized, I think.
Well, it wasn't apologies, just that COVID, um, my comments were premature on opening up. And so I think you were spot on and maintained it, because where we are, where we are today is much worse than we were two weeks ago. And so, uh, I take a giant step backwards and, uh, keep doing what you're doing.
Well, we're trying, we're trying to be flexible. We, we really do, um, review this every month.
Yeah. I just think we have to be proactive, as we, we don't want to keep closed down forever, but in the state of where we are right now, keep doing what you're doing.
Yes.
Thank you.
I had heard that the other area was cleaned up, and thank you for that.
Well, I just rolled out. There wasn't really anything in there but, but a rolling cart with a TV set on it.
Oh, okay.
Any, any comments, any, any, you know, citizens coming to you with comments, please refer them to us.
Okay.
Because, you know, we, we, we meet every month. We welcome, encourage people to come to our meetings. They're posted on our website, usually the first Monday of the month.
Usually.
Meeting minutes, agendas are off, so, you know, if there's anything, any, anything, you know, the color of my sweater. It's, yeah, it's all.
Um, when they do the front steps, I don't think the pouring will be much, but the demolition of those front stairs might get a little noisy.
Well, we have earplugs and hard ass.
So they're gonna, uh, they're gonna hand carry a lot of that cement off the front.
Hand carry.
Just a straight here, one more question.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mike. A joint loss meeting this week, did the sinks get resolved, or what's the story?
The sink?
Yes.
No, uh, um, we, we have a low water pressure in the bathroom sinks.
Okay.
And Woody said that he'd come by and kind of look at it.
Did you get it?
And give it, hm, and then give.
Did, did you see him?
No.
Oh, he did. He came to me and, and gave me an update.
Oh, well, I never saw him, so.
The next step is to get a plumber in maybe, or a handyman?
He says that, uh, that, he said that there's no way of taking one of the filters off of one, it's so old, it's rusted on there. And he said that the faucets are, the push kind that will shut off, and they're so old that they really should be, it's time to replace them.
Okay.
And, but both sinks have low water pressure. One is just a trickle, and the other one is.
So you're taking that fractionally?
Yeah, I, we have the handyman, he's done the work at the transfer station.
I think that should be a problem at all.
To take off the old sink and, or the old faucet?
Yeah, it would.
It'd be less, less costly, but so let's see what, I, a handyman could do that. What do you think, Paul?
I don't see a problem with changing the sink and.
He, he removed in our faucet and toilet in the transfer station bathroom.
Oh, okay.
Painted everything, re-put everything installed, and.
I just know sometimes that old stuff, you think you're taking apart, and it really falls apart. I don't even do that. You gotta, um, start, you know, from down below the floor and come back up. Just, just remember the door closure? Yeah. I mean, that was a, that was a journey. I know, once you get downstairs, I think it's cast down there, so.
Call the plumber and have him replace it?
You could have him take a look at it if he thinks he could do it, we could start that. Yeah, I have no problem with him starting it.
He's planning on coming in next week, but I think we'll stop by tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Any other building issues you guys have?
Um, no, actually, I think we're good.
Okay.
But, um, we, we talked about it at joint loss yesterday about, um, um, how to describe it, the, the little shields that are on the front area. They're working fine, they're working fine. If things happen upstairs, then you won't need them anymore. If things don't happen upstairs, then I might ask Greg to come and just extend them out, just a slight amount more next year. So, but they're, they're great, they're fine. They, they do protect that green door. But there's, there is a lot of moisture is in there, and it bounces off that bulkhead roof, comes on in, and then it just comes in from the south side too, so. It's wet there.
Yeah. I will, um, let you know, we are getting, um, prints back hopefully tomorrow from Dennis Myers. I called him again this week, so. We'll be probably putting that out for a bid package that he's also prepping for us, so. I'll let you know when we do that, and, uh, when we get them back, and then hopefully, once we have the bids, we'll have public meetings and start with that. So, an update for you guys as well, Dennis Myers moved it from the thirteenth to hopefully this Friday. So they're adding a few more things Jeff Trexler asked to add to the prints.
Wow, good.
All right. Do you guys have anything else for the board?
I don't think so.
Thank you for coming in, appreciate it. Budget looks good, thanks for keeping the level services.
We do it.
All right, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, yeah.
Hard to believe, it's like spring like out there, right there.
Day of the day, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay, we have the cemetery trustee in here, if you don't want us to review the budget. Mike?
Thank you. Look at this professional, pretty patient.
All right, on the floors, yours, whenever you want to go down.
Okay. Well, first of all, inside the front cover, you'll have this, right here.
Yeah.
And that itemizes the different things you want to do for the cemetery. Uh, Paige's Corner, when was that established? I mean, uh, the new part, uh, the mills.
I don't know that, to be honest with you.
I'm not sure.
You have an idea, Bob?
But I've been.
I don't either.
Must have been maybe the early two thousands or something?
Later than that.
Yeah. But, anyway.
Definitely.
One of the projects that I mentioned that's to you last year is that we've got two types of cremains gardens. Put this here so you can have it in front of you here.
Sure.
Big maps, a little easier than, see. But, these are four by fours, which are, uh, for couples.
Okay.
These are three by threes. This is the one we finished with warrant article number fourteen.
Okay.
And then these four here, we'd like to do this year also, who's coming here, and this. We'd probably do a warrant article for this. We gotta do a warrant article. I've got the money in that warrant article for maintenance.
Okay.
And that, it's, uh, about eighty-eight hundred dollars, and there's eighty-eight forty-three in the warrant article, regarding the trust.
And will it take care of both of them, or just?
Well, this one's done. This is all done.
It'll take care of that and this.
Yeah, this one here with a warrant article.
Okay.
And that would complete the south end of the cemetery. And, uh, there's photos in there of, uh, the finished product that we've done here so far. This road, we put in this year. And then, uh, we paid an extra eight hundred dollars, and we flared these so people could turn easier.
I did see some.
Especially with the big trucks and stuff like that, why, makes it a lot easier. And so we took out, uh, four graves on either end here to, uh, make it happen. And of course, we've got this one rounded here also, so once again, making it so big trucks can go. What we want to do, when we do the cremains garden, this is supposedly a road here. It's all grass and everything, but it goes nowhere. And if we did a turnaround, that would eat up a lot of property. So what we're gonna do, instead of a four-foot path, it'll be an eight-foot path, six to eight feet coming down all the way here that people can walk on. Be a walking path. And if we need to drive a vehicle in there to, you know, for grave service or something like that, it, it can still do that, because it'd be grass and hard pack. Over here, in the north, uh, northeast, or, yeah, northeast corner, that's where all the trees are. We've contacted Jim Dow, when the ground's frozen in January, he can come out. Two thousand dollars a day, includes all his equipment, his men, and everything else. He can do twenty to twenty-five trees a day. Two days of work, four thousand dollars. I've got, uh, three sources that I, uh, I've, uh, in, uh, in.
Encumbered?
Yeah, encumbered. And those, those are fifteen hundred dollars from our regular budget, because we've been watching our nickels and dimes and that, and, you know, make sure if anything come up at the last minute, why we have some money that we could draw from. I've got a thousand twenty-three in, uh, unexpected revenue. And then, from our expendable trust, I would take thirteen hundred and ninety-two dollars from that. And that would still leave thirty-five hundred dollars in that trust. And that's, so, we can take care of those trees right away.
Yeah, I think that's one of the wisest moves, because those trees will not hold up many more years. And once they get to a point where they're trying to take them down, and they're falling down, and, and, uh, they're gonna hit the stones.
Right, well, I talked to, uh, and we got it in writing, that we have permission to drop the trees on the property.
Oh, you did get it in writing?
Yeah, today.
And.
Oh, wow.
He's been busy.
Yeah, so, and.
Was it yesterday, or was it yesterday?
I walked the property with him, so he knows exactly what we're talking about and everything else.
I'm glad you got permission in writing.
Oh, yeah, we got, we got permission. You don't want to cut down somebody's tree here. Awful expensive, because they.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Are you gonna be able to go back far enough, Don, to protect all of the, all of those old, um?
Right, yeah, uh, there's some eighty-five footers there that need to come down. And, uh, a lot of them were just clusters, so they'll just be able to go in there and bust some and throw them back down there.
Yeah.
And that's, so.
Yeah, the bank going down quite a way.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's steep there. Cleaner repair the headstones, that would be part of our regular budget, and, uh, let's see. We've got three hundred and forty feet of fence that need to be, uh, post and everything replaced. And, uh, I went over to Sandborne's, and I want to talk, you know, getting the rough cut post and rails there. And, uh, we can get the material for under about four thousand dollars, and then, uh, we'll put out installation to bid. And that, uh, I'm gonna try to get hemlock, because that's more, uh, insect repellent.
Yeah.
And everything, so. But it'll, it'll look rustic. We're not gonna paint it. I was thinking about having a Tom Sawyer party and painting it, but I think, uh.
But a natural.
Keep it natural, uh, would probably be the best bet. You know, that could always change. We got plastic fence at the north end, and, uh, we'll cover that with our budget. And that, to have that power washed, I'm contacting, uh, power wash companies now to, you know, get some idea of what the cost would be.
Yeah.
And I'll also have that in, uh, East Cemetery. There's a lot of, uh, plastic fence there. The Hearst House, we want to construct the ramp, which would have a flat coming out, so the Hearst will clear nice and clean. Put a grate between the building and the ramp, so that there's drainage. You know, put an eight-inch, uh, uh, lamp or whatever you want to call it, the grate there. And, uh, not sure quite what that's gonna cost, but what we'd like to do is get, uh, used, uh, aged, uh, granite, and line it, and then hard pack inside. But it would be enough that when they bring the Hearst completely clears the deal, that it would still be on the flat, and so it could be displayed that way. And, uh, let's see. Another one that we need to do is the front road, which is right here. It runs up here, and there's a drainage problem in this area here, kind of floods every time it rains. And that, so we'd have to do some type of drainage also. And that would complete the roads, uh, in, in the cemetery. And then at some later date, down the center here, these are just paths, and that, but, you know, we'd like to, you know, make them more recognizable as the path, rather than, you know, so people know where to walk. More user-friendly. Weed control, uh, my guy's gonna come out, uh, probably the first of June. He'll not only spray all the rock walls and everything to get rid of the poison ivy, but he'll also do the roads, and that, and it's seven fifty per cemetery. So.
You have quite a few of those new plots sold already, it looks like?
Huh?
The plots you did last year.
Oh, yeah, a few of these were all sold, yeah. And this bench is sold here, the new one. So, and that's Paige's Corner.
Right.
Questions?
That all looks good. I think I'd like to go down through your budget line item by line item. Just because, uh, you threw a lot at us here, so I'd like to make sure where everything is coming from.
I, I'm, I'll go to the center cemetery if you're ready for that.
Sure.
All right. Well, cleaning and repair headstones, uh, using D slash two. The ladies, uh, Linda Gray here is, uh, my alternate, but she's also very experienced with D slash two. They've been using it out here to be able to read these stones. And that is they're doing the SIMS reports and, uh, putting the information in. They physically go out and check. And, uh, to make sure everybody is where they're supposed to be.
What's a SIMS stand for?
Huh?
What's SIMS stand for? That, that's a program you guys use it to electronically put them in?
Oh, yeah, oh, the SIMS program is a mapping program that they bought back in two thousand fourteen or something like that.
Okay.
And our, our people have been working on it now for, what, two years? Over two years. And that, finally, you know, putting it on it, it's a very large headstick. Every Monday, you come in here, you'll see them working here in the mornings.
Okay.
And that, and, uh, we're just about, we got East Cemetery done. And we got this area out here, just outside the building, that, that one quadrant, that they left a hundred graves off when they did the, the map. And so, we negotiated, they wanted twelve hundred dollars to fix it, we got it for eight hundred dollars. And, uh, we get a chance to check it out. And we get a chance to check it out to make sure that it's correct before we sign off again.
Okay.
So, and that's all paid for, that's paid for in advance because we saved some money back. And the area over here, it's down there, I guess the land was donated. But anyway, we've gotta create access to it. And we're out of graves for all intents purposes for full body burial here. And we're gonna need more cremains gardens also because part of the, at our Cemetery Association, maybe seventy-six percent of the people being buried today are cremations. So more and more people are going that way. And I think we need to be prepared for it. You know, it's a long-term investment. All this, you know, Paige's Corner, the things, it's long-term. But, you know, when you look at the photographs of the new cremains garden up there with the benches and the cobblestones and lining the driveway and things along this lines, it's really worth it and it'll make it more user friendly. But our whole idea is to make people feel comfortable there. And by having the benches and everything, why we're able to do that.
Yeah.
Fence outside here, we wanna replace that also that this year. So that's on the drawing board and that's part of our fence budget and stuff like this. Once again, utilizing the rough cut hemlock, rails and post and that.
Is that part of the four thousand for the materials?
Yeah.
Is that part of the four thousand dollars that includes that materials too?
Uh, it'll be probably a little more. And that, that's about a hundred and twenty, or two hundred and twenty feet of fence. So, post run about, six by six post run, I think it's twenty dollars and fifty cents. And then the rails are seven and we do three, three high. So, uh, once again, weed control. I came out here last year and sprayed with, uh, Dianid, I don't know, Roundup. And, but he'll come and he'll, he's got the super juice and he'll take care of the road so we don't have weeds growing up in there. And loam, we always have loam part of our budget and that. But we'll have, get some in here and get it floated across the field. We got some sunken graves, stuff like this that we need to level out, make it easier for the mower. And make it easier for people to walk, you know.
Yeah, I seen those spots last year.
Yeah, so lot to do there. Any questions on Center Cemetery?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, East Cemetery, once again, clean repair stones. What I'd like to do, if you've been out there or if you've gone by, it's just nothing but a rock pile for all intents purposes. So I had Tim go out there, he's given me a bid for a hundred yards of loam, float it across there and roller it back, a power rake it, this kind of thing, and hydro seed. So I have several people on Montaloma, they want it to look nice, you know, so. And so do I, I mean, I think everybody does because a lot of the families are still around here that have.
Yeah, they've neglected that cemetery for a long time.
They have, and as you can see, we're trying to balance here. We're trying to do something on all the cemeteries and that. That's, that's our common, you know, with everything else. Power wash that white fence there, I mean, it's got everything on it, but I want it done properly. And then removal of the brush at the top. And we've got that in our ASAP contract, there's a brush removal there. So I've already contacted them about that, so. There and also at Paige's Corner, there's two areas that they did, they handled.
Okay.
Now, the first page there shows the budgets that we've had.
These are all the previous year budgets?
Yeah, over, over the years, you've seen that. And as you notice, we haven't had much change since two thousand fifteen, or two thousand fourteen, actually. And that, and I've highlighted the two thousand seven budget of nineteen thousand five fifty. Went online and inflation, that dollar is now worth twenty-five thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. So that kinda give you an idea of, of the growth there. And our landscaping and everything else has gone up this year. We've extended our contract for three years, but it also went higher because of, you know, we don't wanna lose these people, they're doing such an excellent job. You know, not only for us, but also for the whole town.
They're just gonna be doing a nice job, but we got compliments from the school and that as well.
So, uh, last year we had three warrant articles. We've gotten all that work done. And we didn't use any tax dollars to do it. We used trust funds, stuff that money was around, encumbered money, things along this lines for the three. And especially the cremains garden up in Paige's Corner, right? We had three different sources of revenue to, to make that happen. And I think that if you take a look at the, let's see, I think it's a, yeah, this page right here, you can see the results of the, you know, the cremains gardens with the benches, how nice that looks. The, the new road here from both directions and that, the guys working there, getting it leveled out. And then you've got all the trees here that we need to take down.
Yeah.
So.
Thing is, are you scheduling the trees before the warrant article?
Huh?
Are you scheduling the trees before the warrant, you said that?
Yeah.
He's recovering money from this year for the trees.
I got, I've already set the money aside.
Okay. So this is additional tree removal?
Yeah, this, this is last year's, yeah.
Oh, same correctly.
Yeah.
Same correctly, okay. Yeah, you can see those trees are ready to go anytime. I'm glad to see that you're taking care of those trees, Don, too. I'd rather have those done probably than any other maintenance item at this point.
Yeah, and we were able to find the money. We can do that right now, you know, as soon as the ground freezes, that, that's taken care of. We've encumbered the money and with the expendable trust, why, we're not tapping that much from anything.
Okay, anything else in the blue book you wanna review?
Uh, the second to last picture.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and that's a map of the East Cemetery there. So you can see where everything is there.
Yeah.
And then the next page is the one you wanna look at.
How many acres is that cemetery, you don't know?
I'm not sure. The area we ran for, uh, Center City out here is like nine point four acres. Or point nine four acres.
You wanted to know what, how big this Paige's was?
No, it was cemetery up on the east.
East Cemetery.
Small, small.
Oh, you can see me winking here when she's looking at me.
Tear in your eye.
I was waiting for, after the last page. I already went by that, I didn't see it.
And here on the back of this one, you can see all these graves here that are in this, that's all done with SIMs now. And so we have names and everything on that information. And we, we're just finishing getting, you know, more documentation and stuff. So, uh, the ladies have just done a stellar job of being able to get that part taken care of because.
Have you found any mismatched graves? Mismatched graves?
Yes, everything, that's our company, they have, they have to go out and physically check everything.
Yeah.
And.
Guys have done a great job. The girls are doing a wonderful job.
Yeah, they do a super job.
Thank you. And everybody's able to access that, everybody knows how that computer is working?
Yeah, the three of them work really well, so.
Okay, good.
But they have a great team, they're the.
I handle the construction, the outside work.
No, I'm just glad to see that that's all being shared because if something happens and somebody leaves and the trustees move on, I wanna make sure that this is evolving.
Prostrating, yes.
That's what we're trying to do, we're trying to get the files updated and that. And just get the documentation because a lot of people are, you know, chasing their ancestors and stuff like this. And so the more information we have, the better it is. And, you know, Don at Don's a good resource on a lot of this stuff also.
So Los Angeles Towns, it's our responsibility, that's why there are trustees to follow up on that stuff. Okay, so here's your budget.
Which budget is that? Is that the old budget or?
Well, I, I gave them the regular sheet, but he's, he's also included in his packet, the very last page.
The last page.
The last page of his budget.
Yeah. And see there, I broke down, you know, where the trees are coming from.
So there's the tree work. So let's do this line item by line item. Cemetery maintenance mowing, you increased that line item because it went up.
Yeah.
Right?
And that's locked in for three years.
Okay. All right, so that's your new rate.
Yeah.
So there's not much you can do with that number. Marketing and training, five hundred, what's that?
That's, uh, we go to our Cemetery Association meetings, the SIMs training, where we do it online here for the ladies and everything. So, and, uh, marketing, we do some banners, things like this to promote the cemetery. I wanna have an open house toward the end of summer out of Paige's Corner. I wanna be able to promote that. So just a combination of stuff, otherwise it comes out of lean's budget.
It has for the last three years.
So.
It has, okay.
Because they're also new, they need the training, and I can't turn them away.
So you're agreeing, we should have that in the line item?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, cemetery improvements and materials.
Yes, that'll be a combination of things. It could be, you know, if I need more money in the fencing budget or vice versa, I can pull from that. But there's a lot of things that, you know, I'll be utilizing that for, just for maintenance, loam, things along those lines.
Headstone cleaning and repairs was twenty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Which we never even had a line for before.
Yeah, we paid thirty-five, I think, this year.
Thirty-five hundred?
That was, yeah, it was the end of the warrant article.
Cornerstones for the cemetery?
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually a pastor. It's a floating number, you can see how he spent thirteen fifty. Depends on how many people pass away and what cornerstone. So we have to pay for the cornerstones and we get reimbursed on the revenue side from the, um, sale of those cornerstones.
All right. Fence repair for the cemetery, you're up at eight thousand for the two?
Yeah, we've got a lot of fences to do.
Do those all have to be done this year?
Well, the one at Paige's Corner, it's gonna wait because I wanna get the trees out of there first. You know, and once we do that, we can and we might be able to start.
So that fence at Paige's will be behind like it used to be, they're the ones that fell down. Mapping services, cemetery?
That's the SIMS program, that's licensing. And what we wanna do is be able to go public with it, and that's a different type of license. Right now, we do have the license, it's, was it nine hundred and fifty dollars or nine hundred dollars? That, for two licenses, so the gals can work on two different computers and put things in. But then on top of that, why we have to get a separate license so the public can access, you know, have limited access from home of the soft, the knowledge in there.
So then you've got a little bit of weed controls next.
Yeah.
Moat is, you already said that was in the material line before, you should have said it was the materials. Is it both line, you got it in both lines now?
Yeah. Well, here it says loam, that says maintenance and that. But if we do East Cemetery, why then we're gonna need, he's figuring a hundred, a hundred yards of loam, but he says any more, well, you know, be charged per moat.
And then Hearst House maintenance?
Yeah, we're doing the ramp.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I wanted a budget for that because I don't know quite how much it'll be.
Now.
Now, we're recovering from the perpetual care, fifteen hundred and seventy-eight dollars that we'll put back into the general fund. And that'll, we'll do that in January.
And how he does that is the perpetual care.
Does the man tell him like he's?
Cannot be touched, the principal. But he can spend the interest and currently the interest is making pennies to the dollar and the calendar year. So they're trying to, the only way they can spend it is to calculate the number of graves divided by the cost of the maintenance and then figure out the price per cost and then multiply that by just perpetual care graves, and that's what this number is he's presenting to you. So he'll be submitting a letter to the trustee of the trust funds with his information of what he spent in the prior year and requesting those funds be withdrawn. Once those, those interest dollars are gone, then we will work to, to file a petition with the court. So petition side pray with the charitable trust to release the principal because they now realize that it's, it's more of a burden for the trustees not to be able to use the money than it is.
So, let me ask you this. Perpetual care recovery, you got fifteen seventy-eight there. Couldn't we take that and put it on the cornerstone cemetery line and so that would negate that line?
No, because it's a revenue, it's on the other side.
It's part of the general fund.
Yeah, we can't.
Oh, we can't earmark that front?
No, 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 you have to just budget it in the revenue side.
We're giving it back to you.
I can.
So this perpetual care recovery, I thought it had to go to the cemeteries.
It does, but they, they, they expend on one side and they collect on the other. So if he's sending a bill to the trustee of the trust funds to withdraw fifteen hundred dollars because he has proof of what it costs for a grave, we receive a check deposit into our, our checking account.
Yeah.
And that just goes into the general fund, goes into your surplus.
And it's not earmarked into his?
Nope, no, you never come in over revenues with expenses. It's a, it's kinda like a pastor or.
But as you can see, in past years, they haven't bothered to do it.
Yeah. Teach Don once, he will remember.
I'm, uh, I'm just looking at the budget going from fifteen seven to thirty-seven one, Don, and wondering what we can possibly cut out this year that isn't gonna make or break you on. When you're looking at the fences, do you have just, when I look at fence repair for eight thousand, we talked about material, four thousand, you're thinking labor's gonna be another four?
The only fence I'll do this year will be this one out here.
And will that one cost the whole eight, is what I would.
Oh, yeah, it'll probably be close to it with labor.
Yeah, something you're gonna.
And that, so that's, that's the unknown. The one up there, that's a year away.
So you don't even have that one up there in your budget?
I, I'm, no, I'm not.
We talked about it, but it's not in the budget.
Well, like I say, I wanna give you a roadmap of what we need to do.
Yeah, I was, I was just confused, I thought you had both in and I was thinking, if we're not doing that one, we don't need none of that.
So if he's gonna send a letter to the trustee of the trust funds for this money, we can put it earmarked as revenue, cemetery revenue, under the revenue line to increase our revenues because we know we're getting the money.
I guess Dave's asking you, if you had to cut one project for this year and defer to next year, which project would you recommend? We don't wanna do it for you, we would rather have input from you if we had to cut one project just for this year.
Because see, your budget, Don, has gone from fifteen seven. And we know that looking at your previous years, this has been brought down by the other selectmen because nobody was actually using any money in the budget.
They prided themselves in giving money back.
Yeah, they knocked it down, down, down on him, and so he started out with a real low budget, but we're over doubling it to thirty-seven one, so that's, you know, we had helped you sell this to the voters too, when we go in and
Yeah.
Say we're in favor. Lean has helped you quite a bit on this, do you have any more input you wanna give us, Lean?
I don't know, he's done a really good job, I think that, from what my understanding is, is he's got a goal that he's set, he's trying to accomplish before he retires from the trustees, and, uh, this has been his drive, I have a hard time recommending anything that.
What, you're thinking ten more years or so?
Okay. This here will be two thousand twenty-three for the number four at Paige's Corner, so that would be out.
Another idea would be, uh, take all the fencing, put it into a warrant, that the voters decide on. That way you could, uh, he can, he's got three years to, maybe, multiple years to expend it.
Oh.
And he could, uh,
A non-lapsing?
Non-lapsing warrant, and that way you could cover all the fencing, that would take eight thousand right off his budget here, and then.
So, you'd be looking at, you know, like a thirty thousand dollar budget instead, Don, so it's a little bit easier for us to swallow and bring your budget to the voters, and you can do that as a warrant article.
Okay. Just, and the thing's, that way you could ask for money for all three, fences for all three cemeteries, and let the legislative body make a decision.
If he doesn't have, if he doesn't have the timeframe to do that other one this year, then he could ask for eight thousand a warrant article this year, and that one could be twelve thousand next year.
A smaller number, it'd be a little more palatable.
Yeah, so.
A small, that's like pennies.
I would ask for an eight thousand one this year, and then I would ask for.
At the time we had a fourteen thousand for the, for the ancestors, it's been like four seasons.
I'm waiting for your nephew to give me a labor cost on doing this, so.
Good luck.
Tim gave me, gave me my, my cost on his, you know, his jobs and that, so.
I'm just thinking that, uh, from what I see in, in material and, and labor, about double each other, you know, they, they're almost equal with each other when I'm looking at different stuff that I'm doing out, but that one there's quite a bit larger, so that'll be twelve or fourteen thousand next year as a warrant article, whereas if you keep the eight, because fencing isn't a yearly thing, so I didn't really wanna put it in your budget either, you do that every twenty years, or ten or twelve years, you know, so.
Yeah.
I think Mike's got a good idea there, by doing a warrant article on that one item, then we can palette the rest of these
Okay.
changes to your budget.
I'm looking at a warrant article for number one on Paige's Corner here. To get that.
Where is that one?
Uh, that's the southeast corner, that's the four by four plots.
Yeah.
And, uh, I gotta do a warrant article on number two, but the, I've got the, the trust there that has eighty-eight hundred and forty, uh, three dollars in it, and the cost to do that is eighty-eight hundred dollars, so. It's covered, but I can't access that without a warrant article.
Yeah, so that warrant article's gonna be zero tax dollars.
For purposes, yeah.
So, your first one, what's the total on it, nineteen twenty?
It's right now?
The total on your first one's nineteen twenty, when you look at.
Oh, that's, well, nineteen hundred and twenty, that's for the benches.
Right, is that a warrant article?
Well, that would all be included in it.
So, what's the total warrant article there, I'm trying to figure that out.
Uh, it's eighteen hundred, uh, eighteen thousand rather for the construction and that, plus the nineteen, so that would be roughly twenty thousand.
Where do you see that?
Okay, yeah, nineteen hundred here, well, I got eight, I just got the bid, uh, a few minutes ago. Eighty-eight hundred, or eighty, eighteen thousand for this.
Oh, eighteen thousand.
Yeah, eighteen thousand. Yes, it's, you know, I had, you know.
So, eighteen plus the nineteen, you're gonna get twenty.
Plus the nineteen, so twenty thousand dollars for the, uh, yeah.
And so, you're gonna have a warrant article for twenty and another one for eight?
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
I would rather see them as warrant articles, that way the voters can say, can nay or yay on them, and that way they're And then, and then what you could do, Don, is start a small fence line in your budget, which is, you know, just maintenance, cause you will have done a couple of new strings, so you know.
Yeah.
Maybe you put a thousand dollar line in there for maintenance, you know? And you could encumber that from year to, like, if you, you had a two thousand dollar one, and you had a bid on it, you could encumber one year, get your new year budget in March, and you'd have two thousand to spend on another section of fence, Paulie.
And then we got, uh, headstone repair, that, that'll be minimal there, but, uh.
Yeah, but that stuff's all in your budget already?
Yeah, that's all in my budget.
So, you're.
Number three is a budget?
Yeah, all of those are budget after that.
Uh, number eight there, Paige's Corner, that's, that's down the road maybe two, three years.
Right, and then you've got weed control, all the rest of these are part of your budget.
Yeah, rest, budget items.
So, the other thing I would do.
The only thing that I'm gonna do out here, that I really'd like to do, is get the engineering on that, because you gotta start someplace, and that's where you start.
Yeah.
You gotta have a plan before you can work it. And, uh.
This for expansion over here for cremains, right?
Cremains, yeah, full block.
Full block, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, we'll probably have to bring in Phil, but once we.
If you're gonna do that out of your budget, the engineering.
Yeah, once we have the, the design, then we can do a warrant article to, to, to build it. And I have no problems when I get a lot of this stuff, Don, let's lower the budget again, you know, you know, keep it, keep it reasonable, but.
Well, I think if we pull this eight thousand out, then your budget's gonna look more like year to year, you might put some money from one fund into the next section, and massage it a little bit, but you'll be looking at more of a standard budget, which is what I'd like to get you to.
Yeah.
So, I'm looking at pulling that eight thousand out of there, so it'd actually be twenty-nine.
You wanna leave a dollar in that line, so he's allowed to move money if something comes up?
Fence repair, so we'll leave.
One dollar?
Leave a dollar in there?
Yeah.
Um, so it'd be what, twenty-nine?
Well, we got seventy-eight dollars. Leave two hundred?
Okay. Two hundred. So, a warrant will be seventy-eight hundred at that point. So, if you pull that out, it'll be what, your new budget will be, uh?
And that's twenty-nine, three?
Uh, we'll put it down to twenty-nine and change.
Twenty-nine, three hundred.
Yeah.
So, that way there, so it'll look like that, Don.
Yeah. I'll sign off on that. That's what you wanted me to do, right?
At the town meeting, Will, I think you need to have some, uh, we can, we're gonna present this part of the budget, but if there are questions, you need to be there to help us answer the questions.
Oh, I will be, and I'll have Phil at eleven, trust me.
Uh, the thing is, you know, the thing is, you don't have to go into minutia detail, but I think is you gotta be able to, like, uh, someone asks us, and they will ask us, you gotta be able to, we have to defend it.
Yeah.
And, and one other thing, I'm gonna give you a little word of the wise, this was fine for us, cause we can decipher what you do with what you're telling us, but don't put your stuff in that you're gonna do in the future, cause you don't need to for them.
Oh.
You know, so take that three hundred ninety feet out.
Yeah.
Take anything you're not doing out this year out of there, and then, uh, and then separate your stuff out, your warrant articles don't even put in here. So, um, your budget will stand on its own after that, and then keep your warrant articles separate, so they're two separate entities when you're looking at them.
And I do like this, you point out that cemetery committee in the past has just basically done nothing.
Yeah.
And the thing is, and as Bob would say, maintenance is now, it's not maintenance, it's rehabilitation now.
Well, you move on, and Mike, we've done the same thing when you look at the maintenance of our buildings here.
That's what I'm saying.
We've had to spend more money than what we, we would normally have, our maintenance money, to get everything up to.
It's been everything, I mean, cleaning of the stones have been like, it's not existed, other than we got a few people here in town that went and did some cleaning, but not a whole lot, if you go to East Cemetery, it's pitiful, you know, I know there's not a lot of stones there, but there's still people buried there. They have connections, tell the people to go.
I've had real good luck in getting, uh, on the community page, getting people to volunteer to do things, and that's what I wanna do is, you know, when we get ready to do it, because this cleaner that we have is very easy to use, but you gotta be trained on it, and that's, that's what we'll do, and, uh, several of the cemeteries, they talked about it at our association meeting, that they get a group and they go out there, you know, one day a week, or one day a month, or something like that, and they clean stones, and, uh, you know, but they're properly trained, so that's, uh, people wanna get involved, and if that's one simple way that we can do it, why, it'll help, and so we keep the labor cost down, and you know, have fun doing it. So, we can just take one section and go through it.
Is there any vandalism this year, any vandalism at, on some cemeteries?
I was gonna ask you, those two stones.
What happened here, they were using a high-powered blower to blow the leaves, and those stones had metal rods in them, but they rusted all the way through, so they, boom, 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 you know.
So, that wasn't vandalism?
It wasn't vandalism.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we don't allow that, we don't. No, it, uh, uh.
Alright, well.
And, and he came out and he repaired them.
That's nice.
So, and he knows a lot of cemeteries, so he's, you know, familiar with that, so.
Well, thank you, uh, I think you're the you're the only one that we've let walk. Under that fire, but it was time to move, oh, sorry, I couldn't see you back there.
Can't see me behind them. Okay, first of all, so much for us level funded services, but I got three things I'm wondering about. First is the eight thousand dollars for the fence repair, and these are what, these are, uh?
Well, we're pulling that out, doing a warrant article.
Regardless. So, what's the material? Hemlock?
Huh?
Hemlock?
Hemlock.
Is it treated, or?
That's what I'm wondering.
Probably not.
Well, that won't last for three, four years, so why did we spend eight thousand for that? I just put cedar fencing in, it was three hundred dollars for about a hundred feet.
What kind of cedar?
White cedar.
How big?
Uh, about, uh, five and a, five inches. Split, five inch split.
Oh, split rails?
Yeah. Two rail system.
Two rail?
Yeah.
How much was it for a hundred feet?
Uh, just under a hundred feet, it was a little over three hundred dollars. Cost me as much to have it shipped to me as it did for the materials.
Where did you get it from?
I had to get it from Minnesota, because there was nothing, we had around at the time, but I wanted it, but I'm sure it can be found around, you know? If you Google it, you go online.
You know, we're just.
And, and that'll last way longer than hemlock in the ground. Hemlock will be like three, maybe four years, and you'll be pulling them out again.
You should see what happens to staging flanks that are, are hemlock. In, in two or three years, they've rotted, I know, cause they used to have a bunch of sixteen footers, they got cut to eight footers, they got taken to the transfer station and thrown in a pile, and they, they won't last, unless you treat them, they won't last long, yeah.
Yeah, if they treat the purple and gray.
I know that, uh, I think you got, I, when I did my fence posts in California, I dipped them in a green
Treatment solution.
Waterproofing and that, so.
Yeah, it looks like the same color as treated, but it's not treated.
Yeah, but California's weather is a lot different than New Hampshire weather.
Yeah.
Cause they're on drop soil, we saw where I have the same log flanks, they don't last.
It'll look better.
People shock the.
But anyway, it's cost effective.
Definitely, you know, I looked at pressure treated, and I'm paying, uh, for four, uh, six by six, uh, post, eight foot long, uh, just under twenty-one dollars. And pressure treated, uh, I found them at, uh, I think it was Home Depot.
Thirty bucks or so.
Were, uh, twenty-four dollars, so, okay, you weigh, weigh the difference there.
But you might wanna investigate, when, when you do your fencing, you might wanna look at the materials that are out there, there's, there's some wooden materials that will last a lot longer, and would, would take less maintenance, then, I mean, it looks nice when they weather, your hemlock, and they start turning gray, and when they start turning gray, just remember, that's the day before they start rotting.
Well, yeah, the thing with hemlock is.
When we get ready, like, I got the lumber guy right here.
Paul, I think it's, uh, can, can he come back to us with the material? No, I think the material, he's looking for a dollar amount, the material could be something discussed at his own meeting.
Okay, but I was.
It's not for something at the select board meeting.
Uh, I have other issues here, or questions. The other thing is the mapping services, uh, so I guess I'm wondering, why does the public have to go on that site to see it?
Go where?
Mapping.
He wants to know why the public needs to go on it.
Well, because otherwise you need somebody here so they can come in and see our computer.
To see what?
Well, they're looking for ancestors, their
Oh, okay, so.
Genealogy.
We get calls.
So, that's what I'm asking.
All, all the cemeteries are.
I'm only asking what it's for, that's what I'm doing, I wanna know.
Yeah.
Then the other thing that bugs me is the Hearst House Maintenance Fund for two thousand dollars. And what you just explained is not maintenance.
Well, how are you gonna get the thing out?
Well, it's not maintenance, it's construction, it's new construction, that's not maintenance.
I, there's, there's only so many words in the, in the description of, uh,
But it isn't.
Budget line, I can change it tomorrow, and add, you know.
Then, then a lot of these could've gone under maintenance.
Absolutely, and if he wanted to combine all of them tomorrow, and said, Lean, I want to bu, combine my budget, it would be harder for him to describe.
Totally misleading, though, it's totally misleading, though.
Oh, wow, okay.
Well, it is, it's totally misleading, because it's not maintenance.
But he did explain what the purpose was for that budget line.
Well, yeah, to us. Okay, so, I'm just recounting what I see here, and that what, what the things, the parts that bug me, you know?
My normal budget for the Hearst House is three hundred dollars normally.
Right, right.
And, so, uh, I knew we couldn't build that ramp for three hundred dollars, so.
I bet you could if you did it properly.
Oh, yeah, if I go and do it myself, or something like that, but, uh, you know.
But anyways, I, I just didn't see that that belonged with maintenance, that should be, uh, a different, a different line somewheres, because otherwise, this whole thing may as well just be maintenance.
Well, that's why originally was just Hearst, Hearst House, Hearst and House Maintenance, but it's actually Dash Cemetery.
Maintenance was like when we put the roof on, you know, when that was on, that's maintenance.
It's just a descriptive of a, of an account.
The, the other thing Leo too, is like she says, she has to have these line items here for accounting, but like next year when he's looking, and there's nothing left to do on it, he might leave two hundred dollars in that for just regular maintenance, like.
Well, wait, and I, I, I get that, I still don't understand why that would be called maintenance, I just don't understand that.
It's maintenance, yeah.
Yeah. I think Lean did that trying to help him out with, uh, descriptions.
I've changed a few over the years.
I've never put descriptions on there for all intents purposes and that, they were inherited.
But that, that happens in a lot of the other budgets too, Leo, when the names don't really match what we're trying to do, but
Yeah.
we have to stick with them. Anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Don, you grab this piece of wood off my area?
I will. My visual aids.
Thanks for coming in, get prepared for the warrant articles with Lean, and
Yeah.
And the voters can vote on them, and, uh, go from there, but I think that that helps the budget better myself.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And this time next year, why, we'll have some beautiful, uh, property out there.
Yeah, and so that's your budget?
A little more complete, and look like a cemetery set in the past.
Just driving by Paige's Corner looks nice.
Yes, thank you.
It does look nice.
Yeah, it does look, the corners and roadways and stuff, it does look nice, I think. The, uh, the only other thing too is, um, as Leo said, as, as you guys have your meetings, go over some different fence items and check that stuff out. There are a ton of options, hundreds of options for fencing.
Yeah.
The other thing with, uh, hemlock, as it dries, it bo, it cracks, it splits, it
Bows.
Twist, and next thing you know, people are gonna be rubbing their hand on it, and you get slivers pretty bad.
It's very strong, but it is, uh.
It is very strong, it's like steel when it dries, but it's, it's, it's very tough, because I'm telling you, I have my whole fortress built of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Leo, for coming.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Just moral support for Don.
He needs it.
Have a good night, Don.
Thank you, Don.
I wanna take a drink.
And thanks again for running that, uh, shot clinic down.
Oh, you're welcome.
You know, nobody pushed you from the town government to try and do that, and I think that it was nice that our town offered it.
Well, I, I'm, I'm set up now, so anytime we need one, just let me know, cause they got all my paperwork there, and they said, just pick the date.
Well, I'm gonna need a shingle shot pretty quick, I'll have you set one up.
Yeah. Well, you came in looking for the, the two, uh.
Johnson. Johnson.
Jack Daniel shots there. Thank you, gentlemen.
The next thing on our agenda here, and Mike and I discussed it a little bit earlier here. Linda gave us some paperwork for Christopher, Christopher Remlard and Brian Tyler. Um, as appointment paperwork, and I think that Mike is correct in saying that we don't appoint people to their jobs. These aren't people that are voted upon by the public and appointed, so I don't think we need to sign these appointment papers.
I think.
I asked Linda earlier this evening, and then when I challenged why we're doing that, she could not come up with an answer, and she said, maybe you're right. And she said, we could, should discuss it tonight. I mean, for, right now, Sergeant, a contract is already in place. This contract supersedes an appointment letter.
Okay.
And this contract has been signed by three individuals. And the other gentleman, the sergeant, it's a promotion, and the thing is, and he gets sworn in. As a, as a, as an officer of law, but the thing is, it's not appointed. He's an employee. And so they may not be needed.
I think back when they were constable, he used to appoint them.
That's correct.
Okay, so is that why? But none of the other police officers are registered, right?
Well, they do get sworn in, but it's not.
Not appointment.
Not appointments.
Yeah, yeah.
She didn't want to swear them in without the appointment, so, because that's how she normally does it. If you look at the oath of office, it's taken as.
Right, the oath of office is fine. Uh, we can still give them the oath of the position, but the thing is, they don't necessarily have to be sworn, uh, assigned and appointed by the selectmen. Because, uh, it's a promotion. And the other one, the other one has a contract, and contracts supersede appointment letters.
And when the employees are hired, whether for any of the departments, they have to, they're given the code of ethics? And asked to, you know, abide by that and.
Correct. Well, I, I just, I, I could, she could find something that I could be wrong, but I'll, I'll wait till I'm corrected. But I think at this point, I recommend we defer.
Yeah, I don't even know if the oath of office, the oath is more of a police oath than it is an oath of office, but a town. Uh, you know, when she asked me, I didn't even think about it, so I said, go ahead and make them up so we'll have them.
Okay, so that's why she pulled back and said, just make a motion to promote them. That's what this is actually.
But even the motion to promote them, we don't have to do that, uh, because, because the chief has got a contract. Contract supersedes anything else. And that's already signed.
For Brian Tyler.
Brian Tyler, that's a, that's a, um, uh, that's, we can make a motion to promote, promote him, effective January first. I, I say we, there's, there's nothing in writing for, per se for that.
Correct, you know, that might work because, um, typically it comes from the, the person above, like the chief in, in this case, and he would make a recommendation.
And I was pretty sure we already made a motion.
The thing is, a comment was made by, he's an employee, but the thing is, we do, uh, like step increases, we, it's analogous to a step increase. It's a position increase.
It's a position change, yeah.
Position change.
And you have made motions in the past to move a person from one position to another.
Right.
Can I say something? You, you don't, you don't swear, I mean, you don't have appointment papers for every other, uh, employee, do you?
No.
So I don't see the.
That was my challenge.
You know?
I knew that they do, they do swear in police officers where they don't do a road agent or something.
But like, what these guys didn't all have to be, have appointment papers, you know? I mean, it's just an employee, is my point.
I, I'd say we defer.
Well, this is coming up, though. This is why she wanted to.
Right, we can make a motion to promote.
What's our calendar look like, Lean?
Where, this is the reason for it. We don't meet until the thirtieth, which is the night of the ceremony, and you'll be having a meeting on the.
Oh, yeah, because we don't meet the twenty-third, okay.
But, yeah, they don't start effective January first, so I don't know.
You know, we can make a motion, uh, for Brian Tyler, and we could also do one for Chris Remlard.
We've already made a motion. We've, we've given a contract that supersedes an appointment letter.
Or we could just state that right down here, too.
I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be uncomfortable in signing that, but that's a waste of paperwork. It really is date, but the thing is, we already signed the contract, and the thing is, that's in effect.
You can't back out now.
Well, he can.
You can.
We, yeah, we.
I want to make a motion for Brian Tyler to become sergeant.
I think that would be most appropriate.
The thirtieth day of December. Okay, I'll make a motion. A motion to make Brian J. Tyler sergeant of the Dunbar Police Department, effective day, December thirtieth.
January, for January, effective January first, please.
She put that day on here for some reason because she wanted him to be able to work on January first.
It was the January first effective.
For Chris Remlards.
For both of them.
Both.
That's how you have it in the minutes and prior, when you discuss it.
All right, January first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
I know why she did it, because she's swearing him in on the thirtieth, and, uh, that's why she was doing it, because she didn't want to swear them in without having their. Motion effective that day. So I don't care if it's the thirtieth or the January first myself, but.
The issue is, you promote them two days earlier, then you have to go with payroll problems.
Um, I'll amend the motion to make it December thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, with pay period starting January first.
Well, now that she swears twenty twenty-two.
Motion's been made. Wait one second.
I, I, I respectfully request we repeat the motion.
Oh, he would.
Okay, the pay period starts on January second. Do you really want to be? Because Jan, January first is a Saturday.
I don't even care if it includes two days in the other month, which is due on the thirtieth.
I mean, the title can be taken, the pay rate could be changed.
You can, you can make a motion like that.
Okay, so read back the motion and at the pay rate, point to the bottom.
Okay, I'll have to listen to the video.
I'll, I'll just do it over. I make a motion to move Brian J. Tyler to sergeant of the Dunbar Police Department. On the thirtieth day of December twenty twenty-one. Pay period beginning on January second, twenty twenty-two. So we're gonna cross out notice of appointment and make motion.
Hope he's not on duty the first.
I was, well, I was just thinking, if he gets called in on the first, what happens?
He'll just be at the other rate. He'll be at his other rate. It's only the pay rate that we're changing there.
I'm looking closely in our department.
Could make a motion to follow Christopher Remlard's contract that's already been signed by the town.
I think, I think we have a spine. The, the, the second motion you just made was fine.
Yeah, but I'm talking about Christopher Remlard now.
The thing is, again, he's got a contract. Contract supersedes any appointment letter. Thing is, he, we don't have to do anything. He's gonna be, uh, ceremonially sworn in as chief that day, but he knows it doesn't go into effect to January first by contract.
Prefer to contract.
Exactly.
Is that you being?
No.
We have that happen last year too, Leo. Okay, Albert chased us down. If, uh, she wants something else, we'll come in and pitch.
So I, I threw, I unfortunately threw her a loop when I asked about this. So she was, she was kind of like, had a question mark after I asked her about this, because I said they're employees.
Um, yeah. Did we get a second on that motion? I didn't hear that you could.
Everybody's still trying to digest.
I second the second motion.
The second, okay.
You gotta call for.
Call no favor.
Hi. Boy, that was tough.
Okay, we got through that. Okay. I'm gonna, uh. Review the road bond rates. That we spoke about last week, the ten- and fifteen-year rates.
Hey, I'm asking the board to review this because there's going to be a lot of steps that I have to come, go through to make sure that we're compliant with the public hearing, the language, the review of. Town council, the DRA, and all the above. So the sooner I get at least some direction from the board. Um, I did reach out to our town attorney. Um, the language that you see near number one is the recommended warrant language on the front of that page with the pink flag. And what I need to do to place the bond on the warrant is I have to have a public hearing between January seventh and February twenty-first. He did, uh, agree that the language I gave him for the, uh, potential public hearing to coincide with our regular operating budget was, was it okay? And so he just tweaked the language a little bit to work with the language of the warrant article. I did get a return call from the New Hampshire Bond Bank today. Um, she had originally given me something back at the end of, uh, September. And she returned my call today. Um, I asked her to give us a ten-year estimate and a fifteen-year. I wasn't sure where, which direction the board was going to, um.
Let me share with the board, the ten-year rate is one and a half percent, and it's two percent on the fifteen-year.
Okay.
I was thinking the ten-year myself.
Well, you know, and when Jeff talked to us about repairing the roads, he said that they could last about ten years before he'd start pulling over it again. You're not even gonna be done paying the bond if you take a fifteen-year note.
Right.
And you're gonna start paving again.
Yeah, I just wanted to show those, those comparisons.
No, I'm glad you did, because it shows a different rate, too.
It, it, but at the same time, it doesn't fit into, you know, what, what was expressed was, and I know he said he was gonna move money out of his paving. To help cover the bond. So I, and I didn't hear that when he made his presentation the last time. I was keeping that to myself to get a chance to talk to him, but.
You mean to cover the bond payment?
Remember, he said he was gonna, oh, not take the whole two hundred thousand like he had in the past, and he was.
He has a hundred thousand. He's not gonna take any of that, right?
He said that that would be moved towards the bonding, and he would only take a portion of that money to use for paving that he had to do.
Let me tell you how I, I heard him and what I thought was gonna work. Right now, he has his regular budget, whatever it is, five hundred thousand. We now do a warrant article for a hundred thousand dollars each year to do paving. And in lieu of getting that at all, we would go with this bond for a ten-year period to do his major roads. All the small roads would be out of his normal budget of the five hundred and sixty thousand or whatever his budget is. All the small roads, the shoulders and all the repairs. So after we do the bond, there'd be no more warrant article for paving or roadwork other than the bond. And in lieu of that hundred thousand dollars, that would go towards paying the bond.
After, after that first year, he said it would start to go into the bond, because you're.
On all ten years, right? Yeah.
Right, because you're not gonna get a payment day one.
Right.
No, it says here that the first payment would be due July of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Is what this is.
Which would happen is it spikes up here. If you remember when the school hit.
Yeah.
Their, their funds were leveled. Then when their bond payment became due, it jumped our taxes up a little bit, so we have to prepare.
And the Fed has just announced a three-year plan to raise interest rates, so if we don't strike now, we're gonna get screwed down the.
Oh, those are ra, those are, um, rates this year, but you're right. The first payment is twenty twenty-three.
Right, the thing is, we have, we have to strike now.
The first payment, right?
The first payment is.
The first payment's a year.
August of twenty twenty-three.
So that's, uh, so this year here, he's free and clear to work with his budget.
Yeah.
But next year, if I understood him right, when he presented it to us, that money was gonna get pulled out of his budget and shifted over to the bond payment. And not all of it now. What I'm saying is a hundred and thirty thousand that he was looking at.
What I, what I understood from that is he wasn't gonna go for the hundred thousand additional any more years.
That's what I thought.
That's what I think, too.
But, but that's, that's what I'm saying.
And who that money would be used for.
That's what I'm saying. He was moving that over.
Yes.
To the other column to take care of the bond payment.
Correct.
Which actually doesn't get moved in his budget, it comes to our budget.
Right, well, I, that's why.
And he won't be going through the legislature by asking for another hundred grand.
That's right.
It actually shrinks down.
Exactly.
That's right, because it has to, because we're accountable for it, it's no longer voted on, it's part of the operating budget we're committed to, just like the school.
He's, he said he would take it out of his budget.
So there's no more.
So it wasn't there, that's what I'm saying. His number would drop, and that hundred thousand that he usually assumed would be part of the bond payment.
That's right.
I have a question for you, just thinking outside of books, because that's a good thought. Um, because there's no warrant or no payment due until twenty twenty-three. Would you propose the bond if it passes and then propose the hundred thousand dollars to go into capital reserve? So that the following year, we have the money already set aside for.
We do have to start a capital reserve payment, but it won't have to be the whole amount that year.
Yeah, I mean, that's something for us to think of, especially if we have a free year.
Yeah, the thing is, you know, you drop it a hundred thousand dollars, that, people are gonna say, woo-hoo, and then we're gonna add another payment next year.
Yeah, the following year, yeah.
I'll tell you, the school did that, because the school, if you remember, seemed to go down a little bit, and then we get our bump, and we had a blip in our next tax bill. It was like four hundred dollars. It was.
It was, yeah.
It was quite a blip.
I, I think what Lean's suggestion is, like, collect the hundred thousand today and put it into a capital reserve so we don't create a blip.
Yeah, because we have no.
I wanna see it, I wanna see closer to what our revenues come to and look at all that.
Yeah, I, I agree, but we gotta keep that on the table. Keep it on the table for discussion.
And, and you know, like, we have two years to do that, so we could do fifty and fifty, and it's.
Yes, we have to, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
We don't have to do the whole thing that one year.
Well, no, it's due in twenty twenty-three, so.
Right, so we have this year, next year to do that.
So I expected that he was gonna come in and talk to us about this warrant article before we even go to a public. He was gonna talk about this a little bit, because that's when I was gonna ask him about the shift in the money that he wasn't gonna.
Yeah, because we have to have a public thing, a meeting.
Right.
I did ask him to attend the meeting. He said it was too short of notice. I got a call from the bank earlier, but, um.
Jeff needs to come up with a number anyways.
He's planning on coming.
He's, did a million three when he was at that meeting.
Yeah, right, but he said around that, so, he said he'd come back with a firmer number. That's what he said.
As long as it's not higher.
I'm pretty sure he's gonna stick with that, because he talked about being able to do some roads out of his regular budget if he had to.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But if we drop this down to a million, let's say a million two, he's just gonna come for another bond or some sort of warrant article, other, other years, I think, so.
I, I figure, let him talk.
Yeah.
Um, I still think he's got some legwork to do with. I also would like the board to read the RSA on bonds thoroughly.
Yeah.
Um, if you could get us copy of that email so we can read through it, just to make sure we cross our.
Yeah, yeah, and then after talking to Tammy today, she did say that it was, uh, mandatory that I consult with a bond counsel. Our, uh, attorney now has a, one attorney assigned to that. I have an appointment between nine and ten tomorrow morning, if you guys say, go ahead and, and get more information. Because we don't wanna.
Oh, yeah, go ahead and get the information, sure.
And then, um, my understanding from Tammy is that that cost is typically included, the, the bond bank review and the attorney review is typically included with the whole cost. Project of the bond, so I will.
So I guess if you get information from them, Lean, if you share that to us with the RSA.
Yeah.
And this cover sheet probably about the warrant language to refer to.
Yep.
I still think we're at risk of it going up a maybe a percent between now and when we pull one.
Yeah, I will say that, um, town bonds, Mike, are the last thing to, they're, they like go up a quarter or a half percent.
I just, I just wanna make sure that, the thing is, with inflation going on, the feds, the feds are really spoke out, that they're gonna, they're gonna stop being more aggressive with their lending.
So I just, with this packet that I gave you, uh, is, this one is NHMBA. And on the back page, or that front page, it did say here that. And on the back page, or that front page, it did say here that our ten year bond was point nine six.
Yeah, you told us that last week, so.
Well, what Tammy was telling me is that I'm gonna give you a number, it's gonna be a very conservative number, but safe number, and it's very possible it could go either way, but it gives the the board latitude that it could come in at a lower price.
Right, but that's for January, we're not buying it till probably mid-year.
Well, Jan, this is, the next uh hearing is in January.
Right.
So we need to work with a a.
Work with those numbers, but we don't approve, get approval till March, so.
Like the school's bond rate, Mike, is what she's changed, changed from when they proposed it to town to when they solidified, yeah.
Right, right. But she said, she feels that this number would be a
A cost number.
Fair, cost number.
So it could be as as much as a half a point lower.
Correct.
So it's costing us a hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Dollars over that period of time.
That's reasonable, well, we've been paying a hundred thousand every year, then you know that the cost for me of the year goes up, so you're beating the cost, gets less, yeah.
And you can't prepay a bond, I don't believe.
No.
Yeah, it says rate one five, ten year bond rate. In July twenty first, the sale is point nine six and we expect the interest rate for July to be lower than one point five.
Okay, so I will work with the attorney and then I will work with the bond bank and then I'll make sure that they have everything and I'll get um, I'll ask Jeff to join us on the.
I didn't wanna speak out of turn, you guys are in agreement for her to get the bond book worked with?
Yeah, and then you can have Jeff come in and we'll work him over.
Okay.
I do think that there's a lot more legwork for Jeff to do on this subject as far as selling it off to the public as well, as far as getting his roads labeled out.
Yeah.
You know, the exact footage on the road, the breakdown, who's gonna take care of the shoulder work and all that afterwards and make sure that we have the answers all right for the meeting.
Okay, perfect, next.
Okay.
Um, I met with John last week and um after his budget was discussed, I looked at his the wage scale that we had developed back in.
You aren't gonna let me bring it up?
Mine, but um the board did did approve this wage scale, there was one change, uh the very dark line in the top of the um.
Okay, what we're talking about is the volunteer fire department wage scale. And there was a twenty twenty one rate and a twenty twenty two rate with a three percent increase. And Lean has that notified down here. And John wanted to work or or be able to pay the people for their training periods.
Yep.
Because he has additional room within his budget for that.
Right, right, so that was language we discussed and he said that that would be adequate if the board is agreeable to that?
My consensus is that we should pay him, he's got room in his budget for it, it's only a couple hour minimum.
Two oh minimum, yeah.
Yeah. And and he's calculated out the numbers and a little bit of training that they do there. He should be able to cover it with his budget, he had plenty of money left over.
I concur.
Oh, you okay with that?
No problem at all.
All right, so the board's consensus is to go ahead and include that training period for John.
Okay, I'll let him know.
You know, for the amount of money they get paid to go into a fire. There's some departments that are always crying more money. Maybe they need to look and see what these guys get to put their lives out to protect them.
Right. COVID nineteen cases increase, was that discussion already had with the library?
No, I think it's out.
We brought it up yesterday at the joint loss. We talked, I had John speak on it.
Who brought it up, John did?
I brought it up.
Okay.
And John, and John filled everybody in. It's, it's very, it's the highest in town since this even broke out, it's higher now than when it first started in town.
Yeah.
Uh, and I thought it'd be a good idea, and I, the thing I talked to you first anyways, about the the offices here going back to buy appointment only, especially with the planning board and the town clerk where you might have a bunch of people coming in to register. It may not happen that often, but they're coming into a small area and even the town office, you know, you know, people coming in now and.
Hanging around.
And you have the delta, which is bad enough, but you have the other one that they have no idea, it's seems to be mild, but you can get it many times over, so.
Can I give you what I've heard from the office staff? What I've observed is that what we have in place is working really well. The stanchions over by the clerk's office, um separated enough that people stand by those posts. Most everyone that comes in is wearing a mask. If there's really too many people in those, in that center hallway, most of us will go on the outside, we've unlocked both doors, so people have the option to come in and out without having a passcode in the event they have to bypass that center office. I know that Donna's never been a favor of of trying to schedule because the um plumbers and electricians and builders, they have uh their own schedule where they have to come in and provide licenses and pay for permits and it would, I don't know that it would work well for her.
Well, could I, could I suggest something?
Yeah.
Leave the uh office staff here with the option of if it begins to be problematic. Cuz I, I'm gonna be real honest, if you get the other, if the the other virus, uh, you can't self quarantine here for ten days cuz it's more transmittable than the Delta virus is. So if you sneeze or cough or something, it travels twenty feet. So six feet apart doesn't protect anybody, so I'm just offering that cuz you're looking at the statistics now, this other one is a different variation.
Yeah.
It's more aggressive, I'm gonna tell you that, it's more aggressive than the Delta. But you may not be as sick or you may be sicker, we don't know.
Linda was a, she said she would seriously consider uh be happy with going by appointment if she had to. But I think she, it's it's her decision really, but I think she's amenable to it.
And that's what I'm saying is
Yeah.
Leave that up to you.
The department?
Where you decide, what you guys decide.
Because I know we haven't changed the uh the Plexiglas or anything like that, we're still trying to practice that.
The only thing Linda brought up as addition, in addition to that, one way traffic, is that too tough to do?
No, it has been working pretty much, yeah.
The thing is, she she was worried about the door uh hardware on your side by your office, it's like, oh, it was broken last time or something like that, is that gonna be a problem?
Um, one way traffic?
Because people come into the door and the thing is, if it's not, not almost locked on your entrance.
Yeah.
They stop pulling on it, you almost have to make a big sign, entry that way.
Well, we do, we have an exit sign on that door, they still don't see it, so if if she wants to reinforce the one way traffic, we'll have to make a bigger sign for that door.
Because you got, because no one reads signs today.
Yeah. I saw someone come in there today on the exit door, we didn't read the sign, but we unlock it for that reason because people pull on it.
And break it.
And really, a good tug.
Yeah. So I'm in, I concur with Bob, but I think uh we should start implementing some uh, it's not conservatively, but some protection, protection for the staff, office staff here, I agree with you, Bob.
What happens if the whole office gets it?
We're shut down.
Exactly.
I know that a couple of the different employees were exposed to uh COVID through their spouse or other family member and in my office. And um we're always very respectful of each other, asking if they feel comfortable because there are no symptoms. We wear masks, um and I think we're being conscientious and a lot of them don't believe that this, they've gotten their their vaccines, so they're hoping that they built up some kind of immunity and could rather continue to work rather than not work. Unless, of course, you have the symptoms and then you, they all understand that they should take.
Cuz I know the hospitals got more strict.
Yeah.
Cuz when I went with my wife yesterday, she got to go into CMC to go to her appointment.
Yeah.
But I couldn't go in.
Do you want us all to start wearing masks in our meeting again?
And you know, where we're spaced, where we are like now, it's probably not that bad, but like, yet you probably saw me at the joint loss, I wore my mask.
Uh huh, yeah.
Mask, we can, can you say masks, mask, mask are recommended?
Recommended, I think we still have that on our door.
It's on the door here.
Yeah. I mean, I tried to put the mask on out of respect because we had discussed it briefly and I was having a hard time breathing, I just, I I guess when you're not used to it, I've got asthma, I don't that extra restriction, it just um makes it difficult, but.
So I guess the general, to your department, so all the departments can include the uh tax sector and yeah, appointments are, uh, they could, they have the latitude to create appointment systems.
Okay.
Is that all right, Bob?
And I.
Yeah, that's, just give them the, you the ability that
Okay.
if you need to change.
Yep, that there's, we don't have to wait for it, we can just.
You don't have to look for us to say, hey, you're gonna, you're gonna have to do it.
Use the web to get it out as soon as possible and a sign out here.
Yeah, okay.
If you have to.
All right, that sounds good.
And when I say a sign, I'm talking about the marquee, not the little one in front of your office, the marquee.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to some mailbox items here to get that rolling. Uh, we've got a notice here for the transfer station. Apparently the toilet is work, toilet's working fine now. Um, they're gonna have some extra hours this week with Eddie.
Save this week or next week?
Please only accept materials on that day, Eddie will be doing extra hours tomorrow instead of next Friday.
No, I'm.
This will give him more time off for the holiday. So he's putting a little more hours on this week.
Eddie, what about the manager, is he having requests in overtime?
No.
Then overtime's been approved.
Oh, there is another sentence in here, Mike, I apologize. I will have some extra time in next week due to the predicted snowstorm and I have a load that I can only be shipped on Fridays. So the only extra time, I guess, is for snow time.
So he has, he's asking for, is he asking overtime to take this load up on Friday?
I will have some extra time in next week due to predicted snowstorm. I have a load that can only be shipped on Fridays.
I don't understand that statement.
Um, Lean, I'm just asking for clarification on it.
Yeah.
And and the thing is, uh, he's gotta manage his hours, if he's at forty, he doesn't work Saturday, Eddie runs the place Saturday.
Yeah, let's just be careful with snow.
Snow is different, but I'm talking about hours.
Yeah.
So I just, for the record, I'll be saying that there's been no overtime approved for the transfer station this week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very agree with you.
Okay. Linda Landry sent a notice in in reference to the storage containers coming up for release. She mentioned a select multi probe sized trailer, maybe a solution to the election equipment. Uh, this one will store to be less trips to the polling areas set up, the crew may result in slight decrease in dollar amount of election line budget. Hope suggests that the trailer could be stored on blocks with tires to remove. Uh, she was talking about maybe doing a mobile storage container instead of that one that's in a fixed location to reduce their hours, what I described to Linda is we already pay those guys for three to four hours and they work maybe two hours doing setup and breakdown, so we're already paying them to come in those hours anyway, so I didn't see there was any savings to us to do it. And we already have the container designated for that to boot, so.
It's just gonna be, they'll get done a lot quicker.
Hey, Dave, can I just bring something up and talk about election according to storage? Thing is, uh, just a point of order that I think we heard last week by not giving the courtesy to the town clerk regarding the use of this, the election stanchions. She's responsible for the, some of the election equipment and we authorize it to be used by someone else and.
Wait a second, who did we authorize it to be used by?
Tom Larson, you can, could use it for the um.
COVID.
The vaccine event, that was us, our.
The stanchions themselves?
Yes.
Yeah.
The thing is, uh, she had asked that at least give her the courtesy that the stuff's being used elsewhere and let her chime in too, because if we open them up in March and they're all broken up, we don't know that they're broken up, we may have a problem. So she asked for a little courtesy of uh of letting her know that.
For what reason?
She's responsible for election equipment, if it's not there, if it's not functional, she's gonna, there's a problem there. Basically, we're.
You actually know that we're responsible for setting up all that over there. They just do all of the publications, remember we got lectured on that, Mike?
Uh, but still, but still, Dave, the thing is, I think, uh, just a courtesy to.
I don't mind giving her a courtesy, but I'm gonna tell you right now, we got lectured that we are responsible for that setup over there and we've been working it for many years too, for somebody to tell me that they're responsible for the equipment now will then take the whole job over because we're actually the ones that are responsible, we've been doing the work.
Did I ask, did I ask you to go chat with the town clerk, cuz she was a little bit uh concerned.
I'm a little concerned that she's thinking she's responsible.
No, but she's concerned like, the things, election equipment down there, uh, thing is, to me, last week when she said to me, there's no lock down there, that floored me. The thing is, I felt, I really felt like we let our, we we let the whole thing go down by the wayside because people have been known to go in trespassing in the transfer station.
We did ask for a lock, it just hadn't gotten done yet.
Right, but the thing is, we had asked for one, but the leave it unlocked for that period of time was a a shortcoming on this board.
Well, sometimes you have to, that blame falls on me because all these little things that are asked that there's nobody to do that.
Right.
Falls on me and I just haven't been down to the hardware store to get a lock and I'm willing to do it, but again, it's one of those things, if you don't think about it, I would think about it if I were there.
But I I'm not trying to point fingers and take responsibility, I'm just Linda is as the overall CEO of the elections, who works through elections and she's gotta report to, she's got, as we do, we report to other people, uh, and we help out in setup.
Yeah.
But we do setup, but the actual equipment functionality, I mean, the voting booths, who who looks at the voting booths and determines if they're broken or not? It's not, we don't, we we report it, but who gets it together? I think it's a joint effort by us and the town clerk.
If you read the RSA and how they showed it to us, it's our, our issue.
So are you telling them just to say blow it out, blow off?
No, I told her, I, we can notify her, but it's just like somebody else using that container. It's not just gonna be used for that one item, but that's what I told her, and it's gonna be used, you know, we have a a container with only a quarter of the use there.
Then I just, I just asked her, I just asked that, uh, if we start using the election equipment for other activities in town, it's gotta be returned in the same kind, it's gotta be inspected to make sure it's in same kind, make sure it's packed with all pieces in same kind as it left at the place. Otherwise, we are gonna be left holding the bag come, the town of Dunbar will be left holding the bag when we can't set up stanchions and the department, the secretary, the secretary of state comes in and says, you're all screwed up because we've broken equipment.
We were left holding the bag, we had plastic chains to work with, we have far better equipment now.
Yes, we do, but things we start letting out.
We still do have the old chains.
We let out, we let out for every charity organization or every uh
Oh, boy.
Any other charity comes through, then we're gonna, we're gonna have a problem. You just can't loan out to any charity.
I'll get to you, Leo. It wasn't a charity, Mike.
Well, what, what, what was it?
It was for COVID nineteen shots, booster shots within the town of Dunbar at the town library at the school.
Okay.
So it wasn't for any charity, it wasn't a five oh one seat, it was for the town of Dunbar's people to go there and get booster shots.
Well, I understand it wasn't only for Dunbar, it was on anyone who wanted to come, it was stayed by.
Could come, yes.
So now we're supporting the entire state program?
Well, can I say something? You touched on it, Mike, but uh, did anybody check the?
I have no idea.
Well, that's the problem right there, that's not who's responsible, so nobody's checking it. So when it opened up that, those two doors and there's broken things, nobody checks it, so somebody should be in charge of checking it after. And if Linda's responsible, then she should check it. If she's not and you're responsible, you guys should be checking it. Somebody's gotta look at that when it's put away.
Responsibility out first.
You got the last shot, you should have been checking it.
If I'm responsible, I will check it. See these big shoulders? I do a lot of shit around this town.
I mean, somebody should be checking it before it gets put away.
The concern is, the thing is, uh.
I understand your concern, Mike, and I've heard it.
Okay.
I'm just telling you, they want it both ways, they want us to be responsible to set up and be responsible for the whole layout of the floor and get everything done for them and then they, they wanna be the responsible party.
Maybe if you showed up for the majority of them, I'd, we we maybe have less work.
Are you telling me I didn't show up?
I certainly am.
Cuz I did show up.
Many times, many times, me and Bob are stuck there without you, so don't tell me you're the only one working and doing the responsibility.
The last two, and the reason why is cuz we're paying employees to set the stuff up.
So you, so you don't. So you so you don't you're advocating responsibility, Dave, come on, you can't have it both ways, Dave.
What do you advocate, we hire people to set it up and then we were doing the work, so we're paying them to stand around while we're doing it.
But we're gonna put it in her budget because we're not responsible for it, Dave, you can't have it both ways.
I didn't put anything in her budget.
Okay, I'm just, uh, I'll just, I just seen stuff written in the budget, I just imagine it. She pays for those workers, not you, out of her budget.
I had nothing about the work, so I was talking about the equipment.
It's a circular argument, they're not gonna pursue it anymore.
So who bought the lock?
I'm gonna order one from Amazon when I go the other end.
Let me give us a free one.
I don't know that it's gonna work.
Okay.
A bit small.
Moving on to air quality test. We have one proposal from Drew Carter. On doing an environmental test on this building.
Yeah.
You waiting for one more?
I actually, we've called him and we did personally talk to them, they said that they would get us a quote, but it's been like three, four days, so we have to follow up with the other company. Um, one thing that was brought to my attention yesterday at joint loss is that. Um, I was informed that there's a mold issue in Linda's back room closets. Uh, so when I contacted this gentleman with the first quote, I asked if that was included in that and he looked at it and said, no. I said, well, I need it to be included, so it's jumped the cost up a little bit.
So we'll jump this up a little bit more than it is. I'm not gonna say the other amount because you gave me another quote.
Yeah.
So wanna hold on?
Um, I mean, this is a very re- reliable company, it's not a lot long, a lot of money. Um, I think it would be important to get the testing done sooner than later. And they they have um sites available in the Hampshire, Massachusetts and all different areas.
I'd be in agreement if this company didn't say they were gonna get out to you fairly shortly, you thinking or?
But he's responded so quickly and taken my call personally, I just.
No, I meant the other company.
The other company, they were supposed to get back to us and they haven't.
What do you guys wanna do, you wanna wait, Mike?
No, the thing is, I think employees' health is paramount here.
What do you think, Bob?
I don't have a problem, I don't think it's gonna be a whole lot of money.
Okay.
Remember, this is not mitigation, this is just testing to see if we have a problem here.
That's right.
I'll make a motion to accept a bid from RPF Environmental in the amount of seventeen hundred and eighty dollars. To do the testing at the town offices here.
The money's gonna come out of the maintenance budget?
Yeah, that's definitely where you need.
And I'll sign this on behalf of the boards, that sound okay?
Yeah, as soon as we vote on it.
Uh, motion been made?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made, all in favor?
Aye.
What's the date, Mike?
Sixteenth.
Flying right by, isn't it?
Too fast.
So at least with this here, I can uncover the funds, if they're not able to get out here, they'll early to January, so I'll be all set there.
Okay. We have some town report covers that Lee would like us to look at here, I'll pass them around. I think this one, even though I love this picture, I think it's too big to uh.
Well, I think that's what the other one looked like, but I didn't manage to get it on the the town report cover.
Yeah.
So it would look like that, but it's there's three different angles there.
Yeah, that is, this one here looks nice, I like.
Yeah.
It has the side wing on it, it's of our town truck, yeah.
He's peeing it.
I'll have to look, I think he was there.
Nobody's at?
I think it was out to the side.
You like this one, Bob?
I don't care for this one, so we're gonna have that one back.
Yeah, this one has the red in it, I like that, brightens up the cover a little bit.
Yeah, I think I have to zoom in a little bit.
Yeah, extra for red.
You wanna see this one, Mike?
At least somebody can see where the money is.
Yeah, now I was thinking of a colored background, not a white, because I.
That gray you put looked nice, I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
You like that one the best, you know, Mike, you good with that one?
Absolutely, yes.
You know, you wanna vote?
Sure.
I think it's, uh, there's no snow in that picture.
Just don't look at the roof of the town office.
It's okay.
That was a neat picture she had earlier from the library, huh?
It was, very interesting.
Maybe Saturday, they could take a picture of it again with snow going around.
So Lee, it looks like we're in the contest to do the gray one.
Okay, just don't look at the roof of the town office.
Oh, yeah, shingles gone. All right.
I can color it in a little bit.
Nah, I think it's fine, we fixed that, didn't we?
Nope, we never went through with that.
We didn't? Did we get a bid?
Oh, we did two bids and the second one came in so high, it has to go to sealed bid.
Did we get them from?
Yeah, we did. They're still over the dollar amount, we have to go up the bid.
Okay, we have a Merrimack County uh year end annual report here for the selectmen to review, it'll be in the mailbox.
I looked at that last week.
Yeah.
That was the last week.
That's a different one, the other one's budget, this one here is the annual report.
Oh, the report, the last one was how they're gonna spend the money financially, this is how they spent it last year.
And we have a scheduled interview for next Wednesday for the transfer station attendant that I think you're gonna make, Mike and Lee.
So I have gotten two inquiries, I plan on trying to schedule them back to back.
You're gonna, location?
Uh, transfer station.
And while we're talking about that, cause I saw the email where they were they were reluctant to have uh new employees. I I really think that we have to push to get back to where we were prior to having all of this. The breakdown in the employees there, I think we had four or five before.
Yeah, it was nice too, and that was the goal, was to get enough so that.
And you didn't have people complaining about how hard they're working.
And I'm in agreement with that also, so that if you have somebody leave, we're not in a bad situation.
There you go, and and the other thing too that I'm tired of hearing is that the pay is all, cause so I went online today to see what the private sector gets. The low wage is eleven, the high wage is a little over fifteen dollars an hour. The medium wage, which is what most employers are paying, is thirteen and a half dollars an hour. So I don't think we're too far out of the box and to be real honest, if somebody's not happy, go flip some burgers at the McDonald's. The door flips both ways.
Not just that, those rates are inflated as we talked about in our last meeting. They say they're gonna pay this much when you get there, they're actually.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's a shift differential, all kinds of stuff for nighttime work and it's not.
They say, well, you you how how mu- how long have you worked at this, well, this is my the first job, so they start out with next to nothing, you know? It's to get you in the door and then they forget about too what they have.
I don't think it hurts to interview them and at least we'll have them on file, even if we don't have them hired.
But you know, I I again, I they get the pay part of it is getting old.
Yeah.
You know, no matter what we do, it's not enough and I gotta tell you is. It it's not the kind of job that in in an industry that commands a high wage, so there's not much you can say for it. You know, I'm not gonna have them in competition with other departments where you need skills.
I'd like to, uh, we can make a decision at the following uh meeting, that next week's for the week after. And uh, the thing is, Mike, I don't wanna put him in a pile, I wanna I wanna, if this guy is good, we should consider hiring him.
Yeah, but you have one other applicant too, right?
Yeah, I think the two of them would be good to put on because.
Yeah, remember Cameron said he wants to start doing some of his other jobs, he's got another job, yeah. And so Cameron's overworked as it is now, according to his way he's been telling us, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess once you interview Mike, give us your recommendations and we'll go from there. Um, I have a thank you card as part of the more this mailbox. Uh, from Don Larson for Reese across Dunbar, thanking the select board for the support. And uh. That was nice to see, I did see a whole train of those tractor trailers going down the highway. I wasn't sure where they were going, but it was on chin line after, it's pretty impressive to see the police departments in the flashing lights. I thought there was a president or something coming in there. I seen it coming down one oh one the other day, it was a huge procession of trucks with wreaths uh painted on the sides of them and stuff. I thought maybe they were going up to Bosworth, the veteran cemetery, but they they weren't, they went somewhere else in Merrimack, I think, for a celebration.
There's several se- cemeteries around the state that are going to reach across uh America.
Yeah.
That was the one without mold, so I just regard that one.
And the last thing I have, we had asked Linda when she came in for her budget to check the um. Check the population that was equivalent to our town. She checked towns, um, town of Newton Bristol, Fremont, Hable, Hampton Falls and Lee. Um, our town moderator got eleven twenty six per hour. The only other hourly one was Newton, the other ones were more of a yearly amount, five fifty, two fifty, one hundred, two hundred, six hundred.
I'm gonna have to run my report.
It was a stipend more than.
Yeah, those others look like stipends, do you want me to run it, Bernie?
I don't think we need to do it this time, we can look at it again on the thirtieth or whatever, but I just wanna review those rates. Uh, we also asked her to check supervisor checklist, our rate is nine twenty nine, Bristol's eight twenty five, the rest are up. Uh, I'll read them quick to you, twelve fifty, eleven sixty, eleven, ten, twelve. Uh, twelve eighteen, eleven seventy nine and fifteen, so it looks like on supervisor checklist, we could go up slightly. If we wanted to add a board. And um. Yeah, then she just gave us her her list of how many people were on it. For her budget, so it would obviously increase her budget if we did increase those amounts.
I thought we were gonna take it off out of her pay.
You mean the materials? So um, I guess on the thirtieth, if you wanna give us our moderator, she's gonna break down the moderator. By the hour, so we can kinda get a figure for that. I don't mind adjusting, and those people are are great to have in there, most of them are in there for an entire day, so. And the last thing I have is we have some wage scales to uh sign off on. Two of them, yeah. Make sure I'm signing on the right spot. I'll send them to you, Mike, and then we'll sign.
Do you wanna go around the table for other things while you're doing it?
Um, yeah, why don't we start with you, so who can sign?
I just wanted to let you know that I went down to the transfer station to um do the site walk after the joint loss yesterday. And I observed two of the employees using the time clock. Uh, we received all the time clock policies from the part-time staff, we still have outstanding as the policy signed by by Woody that has not been returned yet.
So time clock is installed?
And being used.
And being used, good.
So we'll see what the the um what's submitted for time sheets this week.
Okay, go, Mike.
This should be for the um transfer station attendants and positions, right?
I don't voice any sign of my spot on one of these. I'll just sign right below him.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Michael.
Nope.
Forget I'm a few too.
How many have you? All, all employees.
Well, the.
The transfer station.
Transfer station, there are a few that are more on call, but to get it done now and have it on file is the best way. We do get audited with our auditor and the.
Who's this John, uh, are we doing John's?
John Salk, he's he's one of the firefighters that he mentioned to the board that comes in on occasion when he needs it.
So we're not doing anything else on his, right?
No, well, did you sign it, it's just to put him in the system as a correct rate of pay.
Okay.
Should we use him anytime in the near future?
These are all there. Two for him?
And they're all twos, one goes in their personnel file and then one goes in the binder, so that it's easier for us to audit.
These are done, right?
Yeah, the one, yeah.
John didn't sign one of his.
Oh, he didn't, okay.
I'm gonna sign it, Kate.
Yeah.
Here's that one. Travel lounge, you're tossing this, right?
Uh, was there one that says the strike through, yeah, that's.
Just for John, yeah.
Is that John or is that Woody that signed that one?
John.
Yeah, we just had um.
No, is this it?
Had all the employees acknowledge that it was no longer active.
I don't think I need anything in here, I think this is all you.
Is that envelope, need to be mailed or something, where'd that come from?
Linda gave it to us for the appointment papers, but Bob put them over there for you, so. She probably wants to put it back in here, it said Remmy.
Okay.
It was taped, I looked, it was empty, that's all I'm assuming, it was over here when I came in.
Okay.
Here you are, there's another.
Did you already get those appointment paperwork that we sent?
Send us to grab it with the, what are you doing with the uh? Well, there's some minutes in the meeting, put everything there.
I don't, the the appointment papers have to be in your feet, I didn't think.
No, they're over here. There's one.
With the minutes, okay.
Yeah, and those are some minutes here, I'll keep those separate.
And that's just the policy.
What's this one?
That just stays in there.
Okay.
So he has that. I think maybe Linda wants me that envelope, I'm not sure.
This in the this envelope?
Yeah, that.
The one that we are gonna fill out.
Put the other one on top so she won't catch the first page.
I guess they like everybody thinking, oh. Uh, there we go, that's there.
Perfect.
And that's there. That's perfect.
Um, Bob, bring it back to you.
Uh, I don't have any there.
Um, just, uh, I just reviewed some vacation issues with the police department, found some savings for the town, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Don't think there's much to report from the Selectmen's Productive, uh, they accepted the guide application for Kelsey Road last night. They had some discussion and that's gonna go on to a site walk next week sometime. And the other applicant pulled out because he didn't have their drawings done over on Gorm Pond Road, the gray one.
Oh, really?
They just extended it to uh continue to next month. Leo, you got anything for the public?
Okay, we're talking about the vacancy, uh, Brian Pike gave his notice on the board too, he's leaving in March.
He did?
Yeah.
Yeah. We thanked him for his time on the board.
Playing board, huh?
From the select group.
It was nice to have an alternate, who's um, who's the alternate?
Ron Salkin.
Ron Salkin can step right up, so the board will still have a quorum.
Although I don't know if you heard Ron, but he said he's not ready to step up yet.
The thing is, no one's ever ready, no one's ever ready.
So you didn't have enough of your, what, everything yet? Um, but anyway, I guess they'll cross that bridge when they get to it.
Yeah, he's got three more months to work.
That's all I have. Merry Christmas, everyone. Uh, make a motion to adjourn at nine oh nine.
Certainly.